So at this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker.
Excuse me. We're, this is the, oh, the regular meeting. Yep, here, present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Present.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Present.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mudad.
Here.
Chairwoman, let the record reflect, we have nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Okay. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union, has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mudad.
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
Tonight, we have an ordinance for introduction and first reading. Clerk of the Board, please read the ordinance by title.
Chairwoman, I know we have on our meeting the approval of minutes for the December 7th and the December 21st Agenda and Regular Meeting, so I would need a motion to adopt the minutes of the Thursday, December 7th, 2023 Agenda Setting Session, Thursday, December 7th, 2023 Regular Meeting, Thursday, December 21st, 2023 Agenda Setting Session, and Thursday, December 21st, 2023 Regular Meeting, for minutes.
Okay, thank you, Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes on the stated dates?
So moved.
Okay. Clerk, that was a motion made by Commissioner Granados, seconded by Commissioner Bodak. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Um, excuse me. Mr. Clerk, I'll have to abstain from Thursday, December 7th Agenda and Regular Meeting, as well as December 21st Agenda Setting Session and Regular Meeting.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Abstain, not a member of the Commission.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mudad.
Aye to all.
Chairwoman, you have seven votes in the affirmative on all the, all the minutes and one abstention for all the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Now, tonight, we have an ordinance for introduction and first reading. Clerk of the Board, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 848-2024, an ordinance to amend the laws of Union County Administrative Code and Policies and General Legislation by amending Part 1 Administrative Code, Chapter 1, Union County Government Structure, and Part 2 Policies and General Legislation, Chapter 26, Benefits.
At this time, I will ask Policy Subcommittee Chairman Mirabella to move the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move ordinance number 848-2024 for first reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise the same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and the public hearing and final reading will be held on February 21st, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Vice Chairwoman Leon. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalki, Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mudad.
Aye.
Chairwoman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on ordinance number 848-2024.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of a concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring to and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, Board. Bob Cascone, Westfield, New Jersey. We were here last month discussing Ashbrook Golf Course and didn't expect anything to happen in three or four weeks, but what hasn't happened is any answers to any emails that we've sent, except answers that say we've sent it to somebody else, to a different engineer, to this person, to that person. We just kind of feel we're getting stonewalled like crazy. We invited you last month to come down to the golf course to personally see where the problems are. Nobody responded to that. So I want to keep it real short and sweet. The offer's still open, one of you, all of you, two of you, we don't care. We just want to see somebody come and do something that's going to move the problem forward, and we're not having that done. We're beyond frustrated right now. Those two fellows and myself played golf today at Pebble Creek Golf Course in Monmouth County. Sunday, we played Somerset County. This weekend, we're playing in Monmouth County and Somerset County again because we can't play in Union County where we pay taxes because the course is unplayable. So it's kind of in your hands. You guys have Galloping Hill, that was the big shining star, then you put up that monstrosity of a restaurant slash small tiny pro shop, and nobody's ever in it. I have friends that live four houses down from Ashbrook Golf Course, and I asked them if they ever ate at the restaurant there, and their answer to me was, "There's a restaurant there." What are you doing? I mean, with several million dollars to build that thing, and it's not being utilized. You have some parties there in the summer on Saturdays and Sundays, any given night during the week. You can't keep a waiter or waitress because nobody can make any tips there because there's no one in the restaurant. Did you want a restaurant? Did you want a golf course? You should have made up your mind. You could have put in all that great housing that you like to put in all over the place and just closed the golf course like you did in the, you know, the heat of the night of Oak Ridge where we utilized that golf course for the archery program, which is running rampant in Union County. I can't believe how many people are using the archery facility there. So let's get back to Ashbrook. Are you going to do something? Is there going to be something done? Or should we just move on and everybody in our group will just figure Monmouth and Somerset County is where we got to go? And then we won't come here, and we won't bother you anymore, but we'd just like an answer because it's very frustrating. You know, we have to report back to a membership, and the membership's looking at us like we're not doing anything, and we're trying to get something done, and nothing from you folks is coming back to us. So please, I'm kind of begging you. Answer an email, come to the golf course, give us a call. We're all pretty much retired. We could be there any time. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Fran Wilson, Roselle Park, New Jersey. I just want to start off by saying that yes, we were here at the end of January, and we'll be here again at the next meeting and the meeting thereafter until we see some kind of results. I was in government for 37 years in Bergen County in the Township of Tina, so I completely understand how government works. I was the Director of Public Works there, so I get it, I understand it. But the problem, what I see as a taxpayer and, and a golfer, is the money that we see being thrown away, your money, my money, everyone's money in the room if they live in Union County on this golf course. They spent millions over, maybe four or five years ago redoing fairways, again, just thrown away because the same fairway's got to be redone again because they're not doing it the correct way. So let me get to the creek, our main issue. This is a problem today. It was a problem last year when we met with the few of you, and we were told that 2024 was going to be better than 2023, but take in mind that this didn't happen last year, didn't happen the year before that. It's been going on for four, five years, and somebody or anybody is not doing anything about it. All they do is cut the grass. That's all they do. I hear that they're taking trees down. I understand there's 250 trees dead. Can you imagine that? 250 trees? That's a lot of trees. A lot of trees. And that's not even counting the ones that are behind the creek where the water is so high they killed all those trees because they're not even going to get to those. Well, we need answers. We need answers from somebody, county manager. Somebody. Somebody that can tell us what they're going to do, when they're going to do it. I don't want to hear about DEP. I don't want to hear about excavators getting stuck. I don't want to hear any of that anymore. Well, I want to be able to play golf on a golf course that I live in, the ones that we really enjoy. We got 95 members. Do you want 95 members to come here and show up? What have we got to do to get some answers? I just don't understand it. No one is coming back to us with any concrete, "This is our plan. This is what we're going to do." I understand how the study done last year. No one wants to share that with us. No one wants to tell us what they want to do. Nobody. So I know the seven of you, the nine of you, you have a responsibility to the taxpayers, so I would hope that somebody up there lights a fire onto somebody to get something done. That's all we're asking. I asked about $7.6 million that you guys are paying Kemper. I sent an open request, requesting that information and the backup. You know what I got? I got an email that was sent from Kemper to the county clerk. Really? Really? That's it? I asked for all the backup. I want to know what they're paying $7.5 million to. Is it salaries? Is it cutting grass? Is it beer? Whatever it may be. Nobody answers you. Nobody. And we're frustrated, and we're beyond frustrated, as I said to your director before. I don't, I'm not pointing blame at anybody. I got to point blame at everybody. Not one person, two people, everybody. It starts up here, filters down. It's how government works. It's how it is in a county. We ask you, freeholders, Commissioners, tell your manager to get back to us. Talk to us. Tell us what you're going to do. Please. Thank you.
Good evening. It's Chuck Snyder from Clark, New Jersey. I'm also here about the issues with the Ashbrook Golf Course. We were here last year around the same time in February or March of last year, and we brought this all to your attention, and you said it's going to take a little time. 2023 is going to be worse than 2024, and so we were patient. We didn't come to the meetings, and we didn't bug you, and we didn't do any of that stuff, but nothing happened for months and months and months. And then finally, back in, in October, after I think somebody said six or seven weeks of rain, you decided to go back to risk with an excavator and try to clean out the creek. And unfortunately, after the rain, that turned into a complete debacle, that the excavator got stuck. You finally got that back out just a couple of weeks ago, back in, in January. You got that thing out of there. There was a big embarrassment at that. But now, what's the plan? Now, are you going to hire somebody else to go in there? Are you going to have county employees do it? You know, what's the plan? That's what, that's what we just want to know is, you know, when are you going to do, go back in there? Are you going to hire somebody else? Are you going to hire Fletcher Creamer, the guys who got the excavator out, who I guess are experts in that sort of work? Or are you going to try to do it yourselves? We just, we just need to know, is, is there a plan at all? Or, you know, are we just going to just keep doing what we're doing? So that's all we want to know. We just want to know, you know, is there a plan and when is somebody going to do something? All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will close that portion of the meeting. I'd like to call our county engineer, Ricardo Matias.
Thank you, Chair. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you to the gentleman that spoke because obviously they're passionate about what it is that they're here for, and I could say that, you know, we're passionate about it as well, and so are Commissioners. We have dedicated a lot of time to the efforts there. I know some things you guys might not want to hear, but we did hire a firm, we did go through DEP. We're still in the process. We have a second addition, a second meeting scheduled with them on February 13th to try and get some direction onto these permits for the work that's going to be done on the golf course.
With DEP.
With DEP, correct. To answer the, the last gentleman's specific questions about what could be next, so there's, not to get too technical, but there's an emergency permit that was issued through the DEP. We're trying to do some additional clearing work under that permit, so, and we're still trying to get an approval through DEP to be able to use either the contractor that's onsite or county forces or somebody else. So we're, I can guarantee you all that we are pushing it, we're working on it, and I know it's, it's something that we talk about, if not on a daily basis, every other day. We're pushing for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to ask for a motion to adopt resolutions 2024-121 through 2024-156.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Commissioner, just for a point of clarification, this motion is to adopt through 2024-157 due to the addition of Resolution Number 155 for the sympathies of Angelina McWallrab. So this is for adopting resolutions through 2024-157. I heard a motion was made by whom?
Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Baker. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmary Mudad?
Aye.
Chairwoman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call upon our Commissioners for reports and comments, and I will start with Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chairman. The Board of County Commissioners is pleased to invite families to our Trailside Nature and Science Center in Mountainside on February, Saturday, February 17th for our annual February festivities, a winter series of indoor and outdoor family fun programs that are taking place over the President's Day weekend. So this year, the festivities include a journey of sap to syrup that starts at 10:00 in the morning, at 11:15, the Hocus Pocus Magic Show, at 1:30, Mad Science Winter Chills, and at 2:30, Winter Walk Scavenger Hunt. So these programs are recommended for families with children age four and older, and preregistration is required for all the sessions. And to register, you can go to ucnj.org/trailside and follow the link to Union County's secure online registration page. The fee per person per program is $8 for Union County residents and $10 for non-county. And aside from our special programs and events, Trailside welcomes all visitors free of charge every day from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. except for Mondays and major holidays. And for more details, you can go to ucnj.org/trailside or call 908-789-3670. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. Aside from my comments, I just want to say that on Saturday, my colleagues and I, who attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the reopening of the Hamilton Stage in Raway, had a wonderful, wonderful time. It was a great experience, and the stage will now be open for regular events during the course of the year. So I just wanted to make that, make that announcement. The Union County, excuse me, the Union County Board of County Commissioners would like to announce this year's Lunch and Learn Program in honor of Black History Month. Yeah. Free and open to the public to join, we invite residents to join Professor Sean Smith of Essex County College for a lunchtime Zoom presentation in line with our 2024 theme of African Americans and the Arts. Professor Smith is an educator and multimedia professional whose extensive knowledge of Black fine art and cinema will be a valuable asset to the Union County community. This session will be held on Wednesday, February 14th, at 12:30 p.m. To register for this virtual session, please visit www.ucnj.org/BHM. Registration is required. And that concludes my remarks. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Another quick note from the lovely city of Raway. I was in Raway for the event Commissioner Baker mentioned, but also, Raway also hosted the unveiling of a statue of Harriet Tubman called the Beacon of Hope, and a bunch of us were there for that unveiling. It's a statue by an artist in Maryland called, well, his name is Wesley Wolford, so it's on loan to the City of Raway from now through February 29th in honor of Black History Month, and it's quite an amazing statue, and it's right in front of City Hall. So if you have a chance to go by there, you really should take a look at it. My other comments have to do with the American Job Center. The Commissioner Board invites all healthcare professionals who are seeking new opportunities, new career opportunities, to come to the Healthcare Job Fair on Wednesday, February 21st, at Warrenuncle Sports Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This fair will feature a range of roles, including job opportunities for registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, certified medical assistants, certified medication aides, certified nursing assistants, and emergency medical technicians. There will be representatives from Carefinders, Hudson Milestone, Lantern Hills Senior Living Community, RWJ Barnabas Health, Vision Works, and Assisting Hands of New Jersey. So in, in our commitment to making the recruitment process effective and accessible, the event will provide on-the-spot interviews, so applicants should bring a copy of their resume as they will have a chance to participate directly with representatives from each organization in person. Registration is, of course, required. You can go to ucnj.org/jobs/jobs-fairs. And for employers, additional employers who wish to participate in the Healthcare Job Fair, please call us at 908-527-4373 or email ajcbusinessteam@ucnj.org. Thank you, Chair. That's, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. Just to kind of piggyback off Commissioner Williams, Department of Human Services has another job fair taking place on Friday, February 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Warrenuncle Sports Center, so definitely reach out to 908-527-0373 from the American Job Center if you're interested in participating and for any future hiring events. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisfort?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Union County Board of County Commissioners and the Union County surrogate Christopher Hudak are proud to announce the opening of the new surrogate's office in Westfield for prorate and administration services. This expansion is part of surrogate Hudak's 2024 initiatives aimed at enhancing accessibility for Union County residents. The surrogate will offer prorate and administration services in the new Westfield office located at the county's Colleen Fraser Building at 300 North Avenue. Appointment-only service will be available on Tuesdays. Residents can conveniently schedule appointments through the surrogate's official website at www.ucnj.org/surrogate, or they can contact the Elizabeth office directly at 908-527-4280. The office hours are from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the last appointment will be accepted at 3:15 p.m. The launch of the Westfield office is part of an ongoing effort to modernize and increase accessibility to the surrogate's court services. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bodak?
Yes. I would like to announce that tickets are still available for this year's Black History Month event with a free jazz performance by the Bob DeVos Jazz Quartet featuring Lance Bryant. The event will take place on Thursday, February 22nd, 2004, at 7:00 p.m. at the Union County Performing Arts Center, Hamilton Stage, located at 360 Hamilton Street in Brooklyn. This year's theme, African Americans in the Arts, will focus on celebrating a dynamic African-American culture and its global influence in the arts, music, literature, and film industry. The event will also include the presentation of the 12th Annual Chester Holmes Humanitarian Award. This program is funded in part by a grant from the New Jersey Historical Commission, the Division of Cultural Affairs in the Department of State, and the New Jersey State Council on the Arts, a partner agency of the National Endowment for the Arts. While admission for this event is free of charge, tickets and registration are required. To register, visit www.ucnj.org/BHM. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Commissioners is happy to announce that the Union County Human Relations Commission and the Union County Prosecutor's Office are presenting a free virtual presentation of Walking on Eggshells: Navigating the Language of Diversity by the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights. This program will be offered on Monday, March 11th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evening. In part, the presentation explores current research on inclusive language and why it's important part of dismantling bias. There's no cost to attend, but preregistration is required at ucnj.org/uchrc. Certificates of completion will be made available to attendees, and I encourage people to make time that evening for that important discussion.
time that evening for that important discussion. I just want to mention something to the golfers that are coming to our meetings and I appreciate that you're coming, expressing your views. I don't always appreciate the sarcasm that goes with it. I do believe you that there are issues and I don't need to see it. I believe you that there are issues there with flooding. I also believe that the engineering department is doing what they need to do and somebody that worked in public works as long as you do understands governmental process, which you say you do, and also the DEP and how kind of time-consuming and laborious that process can be. So, you know, when you make some comments like, nobody's listening, nobody's talking to you, I mean, I just, I don't buy that. I know Director Durbin Drake has met on a regular basis, had some communication just even earlier tonight. So, you know, we can continue this back and forth. It's not gonna fix the problems. It still has to go through the proper workflow and the proper channels. But nobody up here wants to see a golf course that's not playable. Nobody wants to see flooding on hole seven or nine, whatever it is. But don't think anybody doesn't believe you. We believe you. You can keep saying that it's a problem and you could come up every meeting and say that, that's fine. I don't need to hear it. I believe you. And I know that people are working towards some resolution. So, I thought that needed to be said, at least from where I sit, and, you know, I hope you'll take it for which it's intended and that's just to improve the playability of that course. I don't want you to go to other counties to play golf. I want you to play in Union County. I was part of the group that was here that decided we were gonna close Oak Ridge and put money into Galloping Hill and Ashbrook and we've done that. It sounds like there's more work to do. And I'm committed to working with the county manager, the parks director, engineering and whoever else it takes, Kemper, our partner, to make that happen. So, you can be frustrated. I appreciate that. I understand you want to play here and you can't play and it's frustrating when you go there or you can only play nine holes or whatever the case is. But I don't believe that there's nothing being done because I do think there is things being done. Things just take longer than most people would like. With that, Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you. County Council Bergen?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing tonight.
Thank you. County Manager Oatman?
No comments, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Thank you, Chair. First and foremost, last night, I had the opportunity to be interviewed by anchorwoman Damaris Diaz in their Univision glass van to discuss all the incentives that the county is offering new business owners. And it was a lot of fun, in addition to discussing the nightlife in my town of Elizabeth and the restaurants and all the history that Elizabeth has. It was a lot of fun and I'm very happy that I did that because I reached a Hispanic audience. The interview was done in Spanish. In addition, I want to mention that I joined other commissioners at the Hamilton Stage Grand Reopening last Saturday. In the aftermath of Hurricane Ira, Hamilton Stage faced significant damage. The challenges escalated as the repair and remediation process intersected with the global pandemic supply chain disruptions, causing a lot of delays in material deliveries worldwide. However, I'm extremely happy to announce that thanks to the dedication of all those involved, the Hamilton Stage is open and it's stronger than ever. So on behalf of the entire Board of County Commissioners, I extend a heartfelt congratulations to UC PAC for successfully completing this important venue. As we celebrate this remarkable achievement, we eagerly anticipate the performances and events that lie ahead. Thank you to everyone involved in this and making this revival possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to remind our residents about our free car seat inspection program, which I took advantage of last week when I installed my daughter's final car seat, I think, her final big girl car seat. So I think it was my last one and then we go to a booster seat. But we encourage residents to check out our child car seat for proper installation by a program by visiting our inspection center at the Garwood First Aid Squad at 401 Second Avenue in Garwood. There is staff there on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and there is no appointment necessary. It's really a fantastic program. The people that work there are wonderful and they're thorough and they're knowledgeable. So I really do encourage residents, whether it's a grandparent that is now taking a grandchild back and forth to school or, or from activities or a new babysitter, it's so important to get the car seats inspected and this is a great free service that is offered to our residents at the Garwood First Aid Squad. And like I said, the staff there is amazing. Actually, one of the gentlemen that has been working there for many years now, his parents took his car seat back a very long time ago. They told me the whole story while I was there. But he had his own car seat inspected and now he's doing that for others. So it's a really important service and I always like to remind our families that it is available to them. And then I'd also just like to acknowledge our golfers that came tonight and came to our meeting two weeks ago. You know, it is important for our residents to express their concerns when you have them and, and as Commissioner Mirabella said, it is certainly not something that any one of us, whether it be commissioners, county manager, engineering, parks, anyone here at the county wants to see. You know, we certainly don't want to have any area of the county that is usable to the public to not be usable, especially open space parkland, golf courses. That is what makes our county so great and unique and that's why we have them. And as Ricardo said, it's something that is spoken of and discussed on a daily basis and maybe we are not expressing that to you all on a daily basis, but it's certainly something that is being discussed here and we are doing our best to move as fast as we can to rectify this situation. So I will be certain that we make sure we communicate as best as we can to give you those updates, but again, it's not something that is going to the wayside. It's not something that we are hearing and forgetting about. It's something that our departments are focusing on, but as we all know, especially post-COVID, all of these things take a lot more time, whether it be the supply chain or the availability of different entities. So it is on our radar and again, we do appreciate that you have come in to voice your concerns as is your rights. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Bodak? Commissioner Dellisford? Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Kowalski? Commissioner Mirabella? Commissioner Williams? Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmary Muedad?
Aye.
You have nine votes and affirmative for the adjournment of this meeting.
Okay. Good night.